Go ahead and get started.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be a bit short and sweet because we're behind schedule. As everyone knows, we got a hazardous material in petroleum brownfields grant for $1,000,000, and we're lucky enough to work with heirs and associates. We have Matt Ashby and Ben Fiother with us here today. And if you could just stay awake through the beginning part of the presentation, I just want to stress that it's worth it. We actually have some really nice deliverables, and we're hoping for some input from everyone here tonight so that we can move this into the final phase of this project and even talk about the next phase, which we're hoping to get another couple hundred thousand dollars in the next few years and leverage this material for additional federal and state grants. So Ben, Matt, Rogers.
All right. Thanks so much for the intro, and it's great to be back here in Palatka. We've actually seen quite a few improvements and pretty impressive changes since the last time we've been here. So kudos to the team and the community for really launching into several of those projects. The park next to the public works facility is pretty amazing to see how that all came together from what it was the last time I dropped through that forest. So thank you for the opportunity to give an update. We're going to focus right now on a quick overview of some of the sites that we've assessed during Brownfield's assessment, and I'll turn it over to Ben to give a quick rundown.
Yeah, so just to kind of summarize what Brownfield is, it's a former commercial or industrial site where the current state or the past history of the operations that are currently inhibiting redevelopment. So with that as a backdrop, when we got involved with this project, we, you know, were soliciting potential sites that the owners would be willing to have some initial investigation or assessment done so they could identify what the potential liabilities were for redevelopment. You know, the last thing they want to see is a legacy site where there's potential, you know, ugly concerns where they're inhibiting redevelopment, and it's a site that has passed down from generation to generation without potential things happening. So we want to understand what the conditions are. And so we looked at just kind of a summary of what's been completed to date. We were able to get 12 initial site eligibility determinations accepted by the EPA. These are 12 sites that they agreed that we could spend money on. Of these, three kind of got cold feet through the process, and we ended up doing nine Phase One environmental assessments. And that basically is a high-level historical review of a property on what those potential liabilities are and, if justified, you know, provide some recognized environmental conditions to spend funds on more in-depth investigation at those sites. So we did nine Phase One investigations on a total of 107 acres in the community, and those then eventually turned into three Phase Two investigations in the community. But those totaled 71 acres. And we'll run through a few of the kind of blowups of the site. I'm not going to highlight every one. Ride Solutions is the site on the bottom. It was a mix of petroleum hazardous funds that were spent. And, you know, just as a quick summary, throughout the investigation process, you know, while there were historical industrial operations that had chemicals and maybe historical industrial operations that may have justified spending the money, ultimately, the findings were that, you know, it's real or perceived contamination, and in this case, in all these sites, it was more perceived contamination than real. There were really no contaminated sites that had boogeymen or anything like that that were investigated. And that's a good thing because it allows future development to occur with a lot of extra expenses associated with remediation activities. We can go to the next one. This is a former, or this is a current city-owned property. Former public works, you know, operations allowed some dumping of some things to occur there. Ultimately, because of the history of this site, we weren't able to spend investigation funds, but that hasn't prevented this site from moving forward with some additional activity that occurred in that reference early on. And then, kind of the focus of a lot of the funds were on the Wilson Cypress and Florida Furniture Factory. Just to kind of give you a brief summary of what was done on the investigation side, seven soil probes on the Cypress Mills sites were advanced to try to identify soil contamination, four shallow groundwater wells in areas where they had some chemical operations and alleged activities that may have potentially caused some things, and two deep wells. And again, the findings were that really no major releases were noted, some minor metal contamination above direct contact, which means you don't want kids playing in the soil out there. And it's a fairly easy remedy with redevelopment. You're capping that with parking lots or hard surfaces or other landscape features. So it's a pretty easy fix to the issues that we found there. And just to the north is Florida Furniture. We did nine probes, nine monitoring wells that were shallow and two that were deep. And again, similar findings there. So nothing at these large acre sites that would inhibit redevelopment in the future. And then, kind of, Matt will talk a fair amount about the Depot Street area. The city-owned property is in the red there to the left, and then the two blue ones are a couple petroleum sites that we looked at. And again, you know, nothing, you know, we weren't able to get access for Phase Two investigations there, but, you know, this, it doesn't appear to be a major inhibience to future development.
So kind of looking at the sites, we really wanted to focus on redevelopment potential and what could happen at these locations as far as making them viable for future businesses. And so the three that we focused on for redevelopment concepts included the 11th and St. John's Corner, which we provided a couple of different renderings that illustrate the potential for that site. I believe this is also a city-owned property. And so the goal here was to really provide you with some imagery that hopefully you could use to either market that location or encourage somebody to start to be interested in that spot as a potential redevelopment site for, oh, something either office or commercial, retail. We've illustrated it with some tables and chairs outside just to try and enliven and activate that corner. So this was the first site that we looked at as far as a redevelopment concept. The other site that we spent quite a bit of time on was the Cypress Mills area and looking at that area and the possibilities, which are pretty phenomenal as far as what could happen in that area. So some great historic assets there as far as the character goes in the buildings. These are great building blocks as far as being able to leverage that into something that has a lot more character than new construction does these days. And so that's definitely an asset to build off of. Some pretty amazing machinery and equipment still inside there that make a great backdrop for some future uses, restaurants, pubs, things like that. And then also some pretty amazing structural elements on the Cypress Mills site as far as being a backdrop for redevelopment. Now certainly, we would look to the historic character of the site for cues as far as the ultimate designs go and wanting to really pull together the heritage of this location to give us guidance on the overall character of the buildings as they could develop. So one of the things we did was to create a branding effort for the development project because it makes a lot more sense. It's more tangible to people when they can say, oh, that's Cypress Mills as opposed to the Brownfield site down by the river, you know, that 50-acre area. If you can call it something and give people something that they can relate to, it really helps to bring an elevated awareness to those properties and those projects. And so our next step was to start exploring the different types of land uses that could happen in the area. So the squiggly map with the hand-drawn lines on it is one of our initial drawings that starts to divide out the areas that would be more commercial use versus areas that might be more residential in use. And then we produced more of a map that would be a little bit more akin to a land use map. So looking at a possibility of a riverfront retreat that would have hospitality uses and gathering spaces, potentially some retail in that area, so that's represented by the red. Single-family and mixed-density residential on the other side of River Street, and then some green space and outdoor adventure areas in some of the lower-lying areas that are a little bit more prone to flooding. So this was then furthered into more of a hard-line drawing, exploring some different concepts of what buildings could look like as far as footprints, how streets might be extended through the area, and address some of those infrastructure issues. And several iterations of this with the property owner to kind of explore some different ideas of how the development could ultimately shape up. And so through the process, we were able to then illustrate in a little bit more detail what a development might look like in that area. And this is as far as we were able to get with the grant funds in this area, but certainly are excited about the prospects for working with the property owner in the future. So I think the most important thing as far as the Cypress Mills area is the establishment of the tax increment financing district. And ultimately, what this will do is provide the vehicle, the funding vehicle, by which you'll be able to invest dollars into the infrastructure to help then support that development that could happen, as well as improving the overall character in the neighborhood and making enhancements to the area. So the process for this, which will still be coming in the future, is to essentially have a hearing that would find that there are conditions of slumming of life in the area, have some public discussions, public hearings about this process, and then to provide notice to all the taxing authorities in the process of establishing that tax increment financing district. Next steps would be a city commission resolution and then creating a redevelopment trust fund for that new area. So very similar to the way that you've established the other districts in the community. So what's being worked on as a working name is the Heights and Mills Tax Increment District so to kind of provide a little bit of signature identity to that area and ultimately looking to move forward with the TIP district here soon at staff's direction.
We've been doing it pretty quick. I think after October of this year, we won't be able to do any new TIP districts.
That is what we've heard. So Jonathan and Mandy have been kind of working with us on what they need from us to be able to facilitate that and get it done on that timeline.
I have another question. Where that Cypress Mills stuff is on the east side of River Street, where that red line is, speaking of stuff, isn't that swamp?
Out here?
That, those, that area right there, that whole area right, that green area in there?
Yeah, so those are two areas that are actually former dock areas.
Yeah, but isn't that property there swamp in between River Street and the river?
Oh, here?
Yeah, all of that.
There is some area that's swamp, but there are some areas that are buildable that have the old building foundations from some of the old mill works.
The old buildings.
So there's definitely some potential. Obviously, you know, we would have to work as far as the engineering goes on, but...
A lot of dreams too, because when you get close to that area down when that storm gets, you're dead.
Definitely, definitely. So, yes, so that is the overview of the Cypress Mills area. The other area that we took a closer look at was the Depot area and the corridor along 11th Street. And again, you've got some phenomenal architectural icons there. You've got the railroad coming through with the Amtrak service that is a phenomenal asset to the community. And so we kind of started with that as the basis for the analysis of that district and how we can use those assets to leverage additional investment. And again, similar to Cypress Mills, started out with some hand-sketched drawings of what could happen as far as the buildings go, and then moved into a little bit more refined improvements, looking at things like how would the parking lot be laid out a little bit more efficiently, trying to take advantage of Price Martin Center, looking at a community plaza that would kind of connect the front doors of the two facilities, and then looking for some opportunities for maybe infill buildings that might provide for additional tax base in the future. So that was then kind of created into a more pretty picture, a rendering of what that site would look like or could look like in the future. And ultimately, we also tried to identify how this could have spin-off effects in the neighborhood as far as providing enhancements and improvements to the street scape, and then hopefully with the support of the local businesses, provide enhancements to those buildings in the neighborhood as well. And so through the magic of digital arts, we were able to provide a glimpse of what could happen in the future.
Really cool with that.
So with that, we'll get into the whiz-bang part of the presentation here. So I think you saw the picture and you say, okay, how do we get there? And ultimately, what we like to do through these Brownfield projects is provide you with tools that you can use to attract investors. So when we say investors, we don't just mean private investors. We also mean the public investors that are investing money in terms of grant dollars. So we want to show them that you have a strong vision for this area in terms of what it could be in the future. And so by creating a visualization of the area, we give you a tool that you can use to demonstrate that vision. And so we'll unveil that for you right now.
Celebrating our environment and heritage here in Palatka, it's in our nature. We're leveraging our history to build a brighter future. Today, we're focusing our efforts on highlighting Palatka's Depot District and the Abe Philip Randolph Transportation Hub. We see a place where access, environment, and economy unite to provide opportunity to the people of Palatka. The Palatka Trade Depot is the crossroads of the community where enhancements will promote the area as a regional transportation hub. Enhancements to the 1908 station, which houses the Browning Railroad Preservation Museum, along with plaza and parking enhancements, will increase the functionality and safety We see platform enhancements to make it easier for people of all walks of life to access America via Amtrak Silver Service Line connecting Miami to Boston. Streetlight bike loading will provide mobility options for residents while offering visitors a way to explore Palatka and our regional trail system. The multi-mobile hub will place Palatka at the leading edge of green transportation options, while other elements of the plan will enhance the environment for area residents. With help from an EPA Brownfield grant, several area properties have been assessed and are primed for redevelopment. A linear park will provide much-needed green space to encourage additional residential investment in the area. Integrating stormwater management features and underground detention will ensure that future hurricanes won't threaten these investments. And as an added bonus, these features also help to filter pollutants from the runoff before they can impact our aquatic habitats. Clean-up and remediation of several former Brownfield sites in the vicinity will also help to set the table for new businesses to promote a vibrant economic future. As traffic and visitors to the area increase, new businesses are sure to follow to capitalize on the economic opportunities. With a purpose envisioned for the Price Martin Community Center, including outdoor performance space, the Depot District will become a destination for residents and visitors hosting conferences, social gatherings, and other events. The area will benefit from a vibrant street scape with new ventures possibly including restaurants, shops, and offices. With the assistance from our neighbors at the Punchett County Chamber of Commerce, we look forward to partnerships in elevating our economic vigor of the area. We invite you to join us in partnering to create a new future for the Depot District where opportunities abound and our future draws inspiration from the foundations of our past.
All right, so that is the primary beat of our presentation. We do have next steps as far as wrapping up the current grant that we have. We've been looking at identifying additional properties that might be available for us to use the remainder of the grant funds on. We're getting pretty close to the end of the available funding, but ultimately, we're looking to wrap up the grant activities, also looking to make sure that we're initiating the Heights and Mills TIP district, following the lead of staff. And also, I think one of the other big elements is that we'll be looking to pursue additional grants, giving staff an idea of how to pursue additional dollars to kind of keep this momentum moving forward. And I want to say that, you know, we actually work on a lot of these types of grants in a lot of different communities across the country. And the one thing that is really very different about Palatka is that you have taken such a deliberate approach to integrating this grant into your overall economic development strategy and using it to leverage additional dollars coming into the community. And that really is a testament to the vision of your staff members as well as council leadership to basically take this forward and take the money that you're getting and multiply it many times. So by using these grant dollars to provide a vision like this, you're able to actually use this video and the results of this project to help hopefully secure additional grant dollars. And that, it's not often that a community has that vision and that foresight, so I have to applaud you for those efforts.
Matt, if I can just talk a little bit about the next steps. So with the remaining funds, Daryl Myers out of our engineer at our Jacksonville office who's done a lot of work here is going to be working to get engineering plans and stormwater design on the Depot, concepts and redevelopment ideas to a place where we can then take that and leverage other grants. We've identified with your staff assistants, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in additional funds through DOT, trail funding sources, USDA, and a number of other sources related to just the Depot area in and of itself. So, you know, to be able to apply for some of those grants, you need to have it to 75, 80% of kind of design concepts, be able to show that you've got skin in the game and that you're willing to put your money where your mouth is, should they fund you with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to help to create a trailhead and some of these other features that are important to your business.
And I think the opportunity exists to go after a second round of EPA grants, and the fact that you've used the dollars wisely and have then invested in the park facility, you can basically say that got us started on these enhancements, and then the city followed up with additional dollars to make that development possible. That makes your next grant application very promising and really stands out from the rest of the crowd, so we think you've got a great chance at a follow-up grant as well. So with that, we're happy to have any comments from staff or try to field any questions that you might have.
Have we identified any additional properties? So we talked this morning regarding some of the properties along the Madison Street corridor, generally bounded on the south by Reed and north by Madison Street, out to 19th Street, and then back to the Depot District. There's a few additional areas there we want to look at, and we definitely want to go ahead and start looking at the Barge Fort. It may be the Barge Fort is too large for the amount of remaining funds that we have, but it may just be our prime candidate site for the next application cycle.
What about downtown? We're looking at smaller sites like where the Hersalls, the gas station was on 8th?
8th.
And St. John's.
Could get a commitment from the property owner?
Flat-out refusal from the property owner.
Next door? What about next door?
Rogers? We didn't reach out to those operations that are still existing. That includes some of the junk yards. They have active permits and monitoring that they have to do already. We were looking at sites that we needed to put into a higher and better use.
What about that one behind the little fish on 8th Street?
That's the one we were just referring to, the property owner refused.
But it was a gas station on St. John's.
That's the one I...
He was talking about that one.
He owns the storage one behind the property you're talking about.
But across the street from them, the guy used to have a transmission shop over there. It's a big, it's a big building that he used to repair cars.
Okay, you'll have to show us on a map, and if it's something, we'll look at it for sure.
The building on the corner on the south side, it's a big building right behind it.
Behind the Coca-Cola Company.
But it's not actually, Coca-Cola Company is down at the other end.
Yeah, they're still on the opposite.
It looks like a garage?
Yeah.
The same doctor owns that, that owns the trains, or not the train station, but the taxi company refused assistance, yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of, was that a deal there?
In addition to other sites, we're kind of looking for direction and consensus to move forward with the TIP district. You'll actually have to bring it in front of the city commission, and you'll have to give us authorization to schedule a public hearing and set that process in motion.
Do you want to go through Depot in the same time?
Depot is within a current TIP district.
There's a, up there, you have the expanding areas down in the...
That is correct, so everything past Madison is not in the district.
Right, so maybe we should look at expanding that district while, well, before the clock starts ticking, just in case, even though CRA tax are going to be around for a decision on that.
If that's the way the commission would be, we'd gladly look into the feasibility of funding a bike study.
A bike study for that, for that area.
And the reason I say that, have we looked at, with A's five meets being gone, have we looked at that Ape site now? I just saw them recently taking out air conditioners and some other stuff from the property.
We drove past it today.
So they look like they're building some salvaging of the property, and so it may be a pretty good spot to check on if we do that, and maybe the church, the church properties that are adjacent to it, and it may be an opportunity for us to look at that. Certainly, it's been a factory since 1940.
That is a good point with this process. They were in operation, but now they're not.
Where best packages? How long has the best package been there?
Probably since the 30s or the 20s.
So that factory, I'm sure, is probably going to be...
Say what?
Since the 20s or 30s, best package is right next to somebody else.
It was slower house. When I re-toured the...
Then the freight bill's daddy managed.
You didn't take Mary?
I did not take Mary. It smelled terrible.
Yeah, so that would be a great one for the next grant. So the way the grants are divvied, they're in buckets of hazardous petroleum, and our hazardous funds are nearly expended because those are easier to use. So the next grant cycle, they changed the value and the way they've done it, so they lowered it to 300,000 for a single applicant, so you can have 200,000 in hazardous, 100 in petroleum. There's also a coalition grant that we talked a little bit about this morning where you have three pseudo-government agencies, GDCs, city, three parties that get together, and I think the funds are 600,000 dollars instead of 300,000, so you get more funds, but it's also a lot more work with three parties that have a vested interest in how to best use those funds, so, but it's something that we talked about a little bit this morning as well.
You looked at some of the bus garage?
We talked about it, and I think it's one that we need to, we need to include moving forward, even if we can't do it under this phase, it needs to be on the next phase.
Yeah, so you've got the housing worries a whole bunch from that, and then same sort of properties there. I know they've got some C money from places as well, maybe an opportunity to look at and to leverage that. It's roughly, it's that old school building that's most street.
I think we've got...
So it was the, it was a, it was a bus garage for the school district and warehousing for a period of time. I think it's like three and a half acres or something.
I know they've done it, they have, I know they have phased one in the past.
Talking about the bus, or the bus garage and short term. Yeah, it's definitely more than one in the city block.
Oh, yeah. Definitely spot on Madison?
Yes, yep, we talked about that this morning, actually multiple properties along that corridor.
And also where the O'Gillies Barbecue was. That used to be a gas station.
Where is this at, sir?
Um.
That was a water station.
14 to Washington.
14.
Right, okay.
Not for the bus garage.
Stop station on, you had a stop station.
But it's closer to the bus garage.
That may be smaller.
So, I just want to make a comment, I know these, there's a lot of pretty pictures, and it looks like there's a lot of definition, and a lot of this looks like it's, you know, fixed. These are meant to be illustrative and to get the conversation going and to garner more interest. So, when it comes to Cypress Mills, yes, there are wetlands, there are areas that will need some further consideration before we can determine the actual use of that specific property. That's not, but that's not our role. This was more just to kind of conceptualize and to think about what could go there and kind of keep that conversation going. And the same thing with the Depot District, I mean, I like the end product, but ultimately, if the commission and the CRA say that we need to do something different, we can modify and adjust those plans as we move forward. There are some properties there that are privately held that are in a state of disrepair, and this is probably the best time for you to discuss if the city and the CRA want to get involved in some of that remediation effort or cleanup effort. I think I don't have to really dance around the properties that I'm referring to.
So, I mean, I definitely think it's time that we get involved, I think the first step is to go hire the owners and kind of see what their position is, and we may find that some of those owners want to do it either way or, or either be a, you know, or be a catalyst in some way.
Do we have the list of property? The list of properties that we're trying to get toward over to the.
It's less than a handful of property owners concentrated to one and a half blocks. We know the property owners, it just, it's a, it's a very deliberate decision that has to be made to go down this road, because you're talking about the city and the CRA getting involved in purchasing or facilitating a change. Most of the buildings would probably be tear downs. If the buildings remain, it limits what the city can do from a planning perspective for a transportation hub and what you can facilitate there. I mean, we're actually investing in engineering documents right now so that we can go leverage additional funds for site improvements and infrastructure. And if we don't take into consideration, you know, those islands of private property, it's, it'll limit and impact what we can do on the public property.
I think it's an opportunity to move forward, and at the same time, you know, from a new construction standpoint or whatever, we do be able to salvage some of the historic, historical aspects of, of, you know, of what was there, maybe build something that's in keeping with the former character, but that gives us more utility. Because, I mean, they're just, you know, there are a couple of little buildings that are just beyond repair, but I think, you know, creating additional uses, which maybe takes some, you know, some remnants of the old building and kind of include that, or even maybe the aesthetic, the elevation, type of elevation from the old building would actually sit well with the families that also want to. So, with the Booker Park project, for example, are we trying to do multi, we're trying to do multiple phases of Brownfield? That, my record.
Unfortunately, we weren't able to use the Brownfield grant to do what we wanted to on the Booker Park property, because the city has owned it for so long, so they, DEP kind of looked at it as we created our own problem, why are we going to pay you to fix it? So, but we did get some testing done under another funding source that allowed us to move that project forward. We were just kind of agile when it came to that. So, that project will continue on on its own track, and there may be additional sites in the vicinity. Ms. Brown was actually telling me that there was a sawmill in that vicinity too that we need to look at about a block away, but Mayor, that, that project will continue along. We're actually seeking the funding for Phase Two currently.
Mayor, you know what?
There's a couple sawmills over there.
Back over there.
Yeah, I'm familiar with them for sure.
With the next, with the next grant, if we did a couple more properties in that area, then it would be very easy to fold another life study in for the area above Fifth and past Madison up to, you know, at least 11th, if not beyond, to get even another TIP district for you.
Right.
I think they're concerned about the impending legislation though.
And that's been there for, it's been there for the last few years, so it's been a throw.
But they pushing, they asking us to push.
They actually sent me a sample letter that I was going to talk to you all about.
They asking us, that's what they asked last time, to get in touch with our folks and tell them, so we did that while we were there.
Commission board would be a great help on that. Pushing up.
And we did it the day before I was with them, so.
I might not know that we opposed, so.
Are there any other things that?
Oh, yeah.
I think that's all the information we have to present. I just want to close out by saying again and reiterating the fact that you have a heck of a team here that is leveraging every asset that you've got and bringing in additional dollars, and just the fact that we've been able to produce this material is unusual for a community, and it's going to show really well to EPA as far as the results, which helps future grants. So, it's pretty exciting for us to be able to look back on the work that's been done and know that it's been productive.
Definitely. Good to see all of you for the work that's been done, and thank you guys for what you've done. And so, I mean, we're really excited about the opportunities that lay ahead. We just think that the time is right for us to really look at a lot of these other things around there. So for our next CRA, so for our next meeting, are we going to, how, how long before we can actually move forward the direction? Can we do that by the next meeting?
We can try and agenda the TIP discussion at the next commission meeting. We just need a formal direction from the commission to move forward with that process, and then I, yeah, that will have, that'll happen afterward. We can get rid of the clerk on the timeline for public notice and scheduling a public hearing. We do have to finalize a life study and finding a necessity though. Before we can do that, probably need to have one or two meetings with the neighborhood so we can advertise for that internally. And then, when it comes to the train station discussion, I think that's probably a conversation best suited for the CRA, so we'll put it as a discussion item in the next CRA meeting.
All right, so let's go ahead, and I guess without attention from anybody here, we'll go ahead and get that on the next agenda, so that we can start to move that ball as quickly as we can.
Can do.
All right, anything else, guys? Seeing nothing, we're.